Cable television to me, a resident of your city. Part of our agreement with the cable company allows us to use the franchise fees to create
Me, your local community cable channel. We provide direct communication from your city to you.
Seven o'clock, I'll call a Savage City Council meeting to order. Roll call. Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Council members Bergstrom.
Here.
Coughlin.
Here.
Crakes.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start first with our presentations, proclamations, and public comments. We'll do the presentations first. Chief Jewell.
Is this on? Can you hear me? All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and distinguished guests. Thank you for giving me another opportunity to speak tonight and share a remarkable story about two of our community members whose selfless actions helped save a life. So I'd like to call up the Shojerners. Excuse me, Sho-Landers. Katie and Stephen. Perfect. On October 1st, at approximately 4:30 PM, Savage officers and firefighters were dispatched to a high priority medical emergency at O'Connell Park. A citizen had reported that an individual had cut themselves and was bleeding. Before first responders arrived, several community members took immediate action. Among them were Katie and Stephen Sho-Lander, who happened to be out for a walk that afternoon. As they walked through the park, they encountered a man in obvious distress, covered in blood, if you can just imagine that. Stephen, as you can see, is a Hennepin County Deputy Sheriff, and his wife Katie is a crime analyst for the Minnetonka Police Department. Bow. Drawing from his training, Deputy Sho-Lander quickly removed his belt, fashioned it into a makeshift tourniquet, and used a stick to tighten it around the subject's arm, helping to control the bleeding. Meanwhile, Katie remained calm and contacted 911 dispatch, which, who knew? She was a dispatcher at one point. She provided real-time updates to dispatch and assisted emergency responders in their response. During their efforts, the man, who had lost consciousness, suddenly regained consciousness and became combative, resisting aid from those trying to help him. Without hesitation, Stephen shifted from caregiver to protector, helping to stabilize the individual so that lifesaving first aid could continue. Thanks to their immediate and courageous actions, first responders were able to secure the man onto a gurney and transport him to the hospital, where he received both medical treatment for his injuries and critical mental health care. Had it not been for their decisive intervention in stopping the severe bleeding, it was a very severe cut, the individual would not be alive today. Despite their extraordinary nature of their actions, both Stephen and Katie have remained humble about their involvement, but their efforts that day just made a huge impact in the life of the individual in crisis. They also touched the hearts of his family and the entire Savage community. They exemplify what it truly means to be good neighbors and engaged citizens. Both Stephen and Katie serve the public every day, as you can see in their professional roles. However, on this day, instead of serving the communities they are paid to protect, they stepped up for the community where they live, and for that, we honor them tonight. On behalf of the Savage Police Department and our community, I want to publicly thank and commend the Sho-Landers, not for the jobs they do every day, but for their heroic and selfless actions when they were simply enjoying a walk in their own neighborhood. It is because of people like them that Savage remains a strong, safe, and compassionate community. As a small token of our appreciation, it is my honor, along with the mayor, to present Stephen and Katie with the Savage Police Department Citizen Lifesaving Award, along with our challenge coin and our patch. Big round of applause.
On behalf of the City of Savage, I want to extend our deepest appreciation to each of you. We are each given varying talents and abilities to make a difference in this world. Thank you for having the courage to step forward and use your skills to make such a deep and lasting impact on this community. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the presentation by the Fire Department. Chief Bresnahan is here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, our order is off on the agenda.
I was following the agenda, silly me.
Mayor and Council.
Finance, finance!
It's a great way to clear out a room. You tell finance is gonna have a presentation? Everyone leaves. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are going to go through our department updates here for the Finance Department. So, the Finance Department is currently comprised of five full-time staff members, myself as the Finance Director, our Assistant Finance Director, Lindsay Hammers, our Senior Accounts Clerk, Ruwan, honestly, I'm still trying to pronounce Ruwan's last name, working on it, our Accounts Payable Clerk, Pam Megger, and our Utility Billing Clerk, Joan Reichs. The objective of the Finance Department, or our objective statement, the Finance Department is committed to managing public funds with integrity, transparency, and accountability. We ensure that financial responsibility while supporting the efficient and effective delivery of essential services to our community. Again, we have five full-time staff members within our department. We oversee accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll, utility billing, overall budgeting, all of the financials. Some performance measures for the Finance Department. If you kind of see here, the numbers of invoices processed, we pay a lot of money out of the Finance Department, it's no secret. Other departments help us bring it in, we cut the checks and send them out. Looking at 2023, we had just over, or just under 7,700 invoices processed. 2024, that number grew to just over 8,200, and so far, year-to-date, we're at 1,300 invoices so far. So our claims continue to increase as we continue to go through the years. Some of these may have peaks and valleys, depending on the projects that we have. For the number of employee pays, this is every single employee for every single payroll, including those special payouts. So this will be the uniform allowances as a special payout, the vacation cash out, the sick cap overages at the end of the year. All of those are included. So again, as we are seeing increased numbers in our staffing, we're going to see increased numbers in our payroll. The 2025 year-to-date, that is through the end of January right now, we have not updated for February, so keep in mind, 411 payrolls, or pays processed for a single month. Our utility move-in, move-outs, so this is just kind of as we watch the ebb and flow within our community, in 2023, we saw 598, in 2024, we saw a small increase of 610, and so far, in 2025, we're looking at 80. Looking pretty stable. Some accomplishments within the Finance Department. So in 2024, we again received a clean, unmodified audit opinion for the 2023 financials. We did just receive the actual medallion today for our 27th consecutive year of receiving the Certificate of Achievement in Excellent Financial Reporting. So that's a good hurrah day for the Finance Department. We always kind of sit at the edge of our seats, because we submit this in the end of June, and we don't hear back until January, so.
I'm celebrating with you.
It's a long turnaround. Nobody wants to be the one that doesn't receive this reward or award after it's been happening for so many years. We also retained our AAA bond rating again, and we have successfully identified numerous fraud attempts. And where identifying fraud attempts may not seem like that big of a deal, we are seeing more and more sophisticated fraud attempts. The biggest one that we had this last year was actually from Boyer Trucks. Of our Accounts, our Accounts Payable Clerk identified an email that came directly from a legitimate Boyer Trucks email from their Accounts Receivable Department that was actually fraud. Somebody had hacked into their system, gotten into their Accounts Receivable Clerk's email address, and sent a fraudulent email trying to change their banking information. Keep in mind, this is where we buy all of our snowplows from. These are all going through Boyer Truck for the most part. It's high-dollar values that we're sending through here. So thanks to Pam's very diligent and cautionary way of doing business, we were able to identify this, reach out to Boyer Trucks and say, you have a problem internally, you need to address. Turns out, their Accounts Receivable Clerk was on vacation when this was happening, so it was a big problem, they had multiple cities they needed to call. Some future challenges that we're looking at in the Finance Department is, as we reach full build-out in the community, we again are also impacted with every other department here. The development, economic development and redevelopment, and our budgeting is all going to have to shift with this, because we are not going to see our excess revenues, as you've heard me say time and time again, we cannot rely on excess revenues. We now have to start putting in perpetual funding sources for a lot of our initiatives that we have in place. We also are looking and facing the end of our financial software, the end of life for our financial software. This is a high-ticket item that will make me sick when we have to do it, that will probably make you guys sick. We demoed one software, which is admittedly the most expensive, best software out there just to see what's worst-case scenario. We're looking at, for a financial software of that caliber, $250,000 a year and a $500,000 implementation. It's not a small money that we're playing with. Right now, our software costs us about $80,000 a year for perspective. It can do many more things. We're gonna try to find a happy medium that doesn't cost that much, but we're also gonna try to find something that serves our community and this city the best. We're also working on succession planning within the department. So our Utility Billing Clerk and our Accounts Payable Clerk are both planning their retirements here in the semi-near future. With that, financial staff is not an easy department to fill, as you learned trying to fill my position. It takes a long time to find finance staff. There's less and less people going into the field, because we're competing with the private sector, and overall, just less and less involvement for government organizations and the schools. So that's something that I've worked on with the Minnesota Government Finance Officers Association, and they've worked heavily on for the last few years, is getting more outreach into showing people that the public sector is still existent, has a lot of job stability, that you can come here and have a very long and successful career. So we're working on it, we're trying to plan these retirements accordingly, so that we don't have a retirement happen, and then we sit vacant in those positions for two to three months, because that gets very expensive when you start having to hire temps to fill that. We're also seeing, again, kind of piggybacking on that fraud attempt identification that we've had, these fraudsters continue to get more and more sophisticated as the years go on. All of us throughout the state are constantly talking with each other as to what are you experiencing, what are you seeing, so that we can be more and more vigilant towards these things. But it's not really a matter of if, it's a matter of when something happens, and we're gonna do our best to control the risk that we have, so. With that, I'll take any questions before I turn it over to Jeremy for a more exciting presentation.
Not knocking the Fire Department, but is there anything more exciting than finance? I don't know. I know, I'm the nerd up here.
It's all right, Jeremy and I were nerding out earlier today in a meeting, so it's all good.
Any questions for Matt? I just want to thank you and your staff, and coming from the person who sat at some of those desks, I know how much work that stuff is, so, thank you. Chief Bresnahan!
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just gonna slide a screen over here just to see if this still... Perfect. Now I'm gonna... Something I'll show you later.
Uh-oh.
Plenty of presentations. I think I got it, thank you, Brad. All right, excuse me. So we'll be showing that a little bit later here. So, first and foremost, we'll start with the Savage Fire Department's mission statement. Savage Fire Department is to minimize loss of life property from fires, natural disasters, and other life-threatening situations, and assist other emergency agencies conduct similar activities. This slide will show you a little real high-level overview of the organization of our Fire Department, obviously starting with the Mayor of the community and council, then moving on to City Administrator Brad Larson, then myself, supported by the Administrative Coordinator. Then we split off the department into two branches essentially. One is the Risk Reduction Branch, which is the Fire Marshal's responsibility, and then the Assistant Chief, they'll oversee operations and training. We'll go a little more detail of that later. Under the Ops Chief, you'll see that our department breaks down into three shifts. These three shifts are 24-hour shifts. This is what provides the 24-hours, seven-day-a-week coverage that our community has come to expect. Each one of those shifts is led by a captain or a shift commander, and then we are a combination department, but currently, we have two full-timers on each one of those shifts, looking to add a third in July, and then we also do use our part-time staff to help facilitate station staffing, to bolster up those safe staffing levels. So from there, our next tier is our part-time firefighters. We usually have one part-time lieutenant, and then part-time firefighters after that. The slide is a little out-to-date, due to the numbers of part-time firefighters, we no longer have enough to fill six squads, so that is reduced to three. Little bit more in-depth about us, starting on the left-hand side is the organizational chart, starting with myself, and then Marcy George, the Administrative Coordinator. And this just further identifies the divisions that the two Assistant Chiefs oversee. So our Fire Marshal, John Burrow, will oversee all of our community risk reduction efforts. Yes, it's one box or one division, but there's multiple facets to community risk reduction efforts, that being community education, inspections, investigations, and a long list of items. Then also Chad Martin, the newest Assistant Chief, who you'll see after his year probation is completed for a badge-in, oversees the training and operations, which all the shifts sit underneath his responsibility. Yes, we are currently a combination fire department. We have nine full-time firefighters and 20 part-time firefighters. This is where I give a huge appreciation to our communications team, as we're in the stages of recruitment for those three firefighters in July. Just to put in perspective the good work that our communications department is doing, on average, the last time we opened up for opportunities for career staff, we had over 60 applicants, that is unheard of for fire departments, and I truly believe it's because of their efforts. And then we are also gonna be going out for additional part-time firefighters with the hopes to have a better recruitment than we did last year. And we have made some changes into the residency requirement to hopefully capture a bigger pool of candidates. So that went from seven minutes to 10 minutes. It sounds small, but it actually does open up quite a bit more space for us to recruit from. Many times, people will say, well, why not go any longer than 10 minutes? Well, if we were to go longer than 10 minutes, then you'd be challenged to justify the existence of the part-time staff, because when we have a secondary or a third call, they're who are relying to come back to the station in that quickest response possible to deliver that service. Anything longer than that, we would probably just call mutual aid. So that's the why between the seven and 10. We do have two fire stations within this community. Fire Station 1 of O'Connell is the station that is staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Fire Station 2, we actually look as an on-call station, due to the fact it has not, it does not have the amenities to support station staffing. Quick overview of the Fire Department responsibilities. Yes, we do a terrible job of marketing our services, we put fire on the side of our trucks, we actually have recently put emergency medical services, but still, that is only two of the six priorities that the Fire Department oversees within our community. One is emergency medical services, fire protection, hazardous materials, technical rescue, community risk reduction, and then just most recently, emergency management. So it is, a lot of this sits underneath the community risk reduction, and Chad, they do a great job, so does our staff. So some of our activity measures, which are outlined by really two things, one, the standard of cover study that was accepted in 2023, and also the City Council adopted performance goals, right? Goals being that we're always trying to achieve, and we have taken some really significant steps forward. In that standard cover study, were six priorities that were outlined, and I would say that over half of those have already been achieved. The three remaining are steps for future strategic planning. So one of those metrics that the standard cover study showed was these three top categories, which are the three segments of a total response time. I know Councilmember Bergstrom is new to the council, so I know that other councils heard this, but for the community also. So total response time is three segments of time. That's your call handling time, that's when our community dials 911, they get to the dispatcher, and the dispatcher tones out the Fire Department. That's the first segment. The second one is the turnout time. The fire station's been notified, and our firefighters go en route. That's the second segment. And then the third one is, once we go en route to arriving at the address, that's the response time. Our total response time is taking all three of those numbers together. And then also, metrics is calls for service. We see a continued growth in our call volume, and we'll go into that a little bit further here with the next presentation I have. The other two is us really leveraging the changing in the staffing model. So before, when you had part-time firefighters, we could get you maybe a couple times a month, but in between our staff's time responding to calls, they're also doing fleet, facility, public education, and training hours. And this is where you're seeing these significant jumps from $6,000 to $10,000 hours of training. This is the performance that they're giving this community, right? And they've made significant improvements. On this very bottom here is the Savage Fire Department dashboard, so I'm gonna hopefully not mess this up. So this is a dashboard that's been created for City Council and the community. This is gonna provide you some general overview of what the Fire Department is doing. So I'm gonna give you a really quick overview, and you'll have the access to this link. So if you start at the very top ribbon here, Savage Events, this is looking from 2021 to today. Up here, in these two upper boxes for incident type and year, you can go and actually select the individual year you would like to know the response information. Currently, in this next row, right by the badge, is currently we're at 368 calls, and with the pace that we're at, we're projecting a 2,166 call a year. Right now, that's about a 29% increase in call volume for our firefighters yet this year. Try to hit this. There you go. So 371, 2100, we're at a 30% increase year-to-date today. Also, you'll see these number of incidents. Many times, we get asked from the community and from City Council, what is our Fire Department doing? This is what we're doing. So you can actually dive down into what is the incident types that we're actually responding on. Now, this is gonna give you a large number, again, because it's looking at all of those years. You can really get that down to an individual year. Next to it is incident category. So what this will do is it'll take all those numbers, and it's gonna put you into six different buckets. This is six different buckets over the last four years. You can actually dive down to a single year if you wish. So here, you can actually get pins. It will, after you get into a certain point, they will erase, so we don't identify anybody's property. Council can also look at it as a heat map. Here's your different incident types that we're responding to. If you want to know how busy we are on the hour of the day, you have that information here. Then, days of the week that we are busiest. Everybody's always surprised that Sunday is our slowest day, and Monday is our largest. Usually it's because people are putting off their symptoms, and then they come home on Monday, finally they've had enough, and they contact emergency services. Here, you can have months at the bottom of this, you can toggle on and off the years you're comparing, but that'll give you a year-to-year comparison. And then overall, this is your incline in operational calls for service. We have seen a consistent and drastic incline year-to-year. So, I'll let you play with any questions from City Council, please feel free to reach out to Brad Larson, and we can get you that answer. One second. All right, so another metric that we're gonna be adding is overlapping calls. So this is really important. So an overlapping call is when more than one call is running at any one time. So this really limits the level of service that we can provide our community. Anytime we have an overlapping call, many times, we actually strike an all call, turning out the entire station to come take that second or third call that's running. Again, with this, with the call volume, many times, as you'll see, is the overlapping calls also increase. We're currently at 11% for our overlapping calls. What we've always communicated to the community and council is we always try to build a system to meet 90% of our call volume. This is now 89%. So it's one of those flags, those thresholds, that says, all right, strategic planning, right? We just gotta keep on top of that a little bit on our department. So Fire Department summary for accomplishments and challenges. So let's just say 2024 was a very challenging year for the Fire Department. We lost two of our, two firefighters in our community, Adam Finseth being one Burnsville firefighter, also was a previous Savage firefighter, has strong ties to our department, and then the loss of Brian Hutner. Even before the City Council in this community had a really strong initiative to support its Public Safety Service personnel, some of these mental health initiatives is K9 Marshal, who everybody absolutely loves, and the staff love him also, I think the community loves him. You walk into a room, and if the dog's not with John, he feels like he's being left out. Another one is the embedded mental health professional. For those who are councilor or no, we have a professional mental health counselor that comes into the fire station 13 hours a month, and he's giving them real-time support resources to manage that call and those emotions on a day-to-day, given that immediate, right? Like that support. We've seen a significant improvement. He's also delivering education to our firefighters, over and above just what he's giving day-to-day, or month-to-month. Fleet reduction. So with the change in operations, and no longer being a part-time service and having career, we've had the ability to reduce three very expensive pieces of equipment from our fleet without impacting the delivery of service in our operations, and we continue to evaluate that into the future. Historically, the Savage Fire Department has been a part-time fire department, where you tone 30, 40 firefighters back, you had to get a way for them to get to the scene. Well, those apparatus nowadays are $1.1,2 million to $500,000. Leveraging... Leveraging the on-duty staff, we can deliver the right apparatus with the right crew size, not wasting and abusing our fleet. That goes to the second one, cross-staffing of vehicles. So we have rescue trucks, engine, and ladders. Us delivering an engine and ladder for every single call is not ethically responsible, nor is it financially responsible. So we're trying to cross-staff. So when we do have the staffing levels, we'll split the crew up, we'll put some on a rescue truck, some on a suppression vehicle. The medical comes out, we're just gonna deliver them the inexpensive vehicle with those two firefighters, and hold back for that overlapping call or that suppression call. If a fire comes and everybody's there, they all get onto the engine, and we have a really well-staffed truck. Increased medical variances in the 2023 standard cover of study. One of the six priorities is the Fire Department to increase its medical training to the advanced life support level. We have not attained that, but we're taking slow and incremental steps to achieve it. Why those medical variances are important? Align is a good organization, but they're faced with a reduction in resources, a reduction in staffing, and a really busy call volume. So their response time is getting very long. We are dedicated to ensuring that our community and its guests don't suffer because of that performance, and our firefighters are able to give these medical variances in a timely fashion, increasing and benefiting patient outcomes. Also, increased community risk reduction with Assistant Chief Burrow at the helm. And a special thank you to the Savage Police Department, because they are great partners in this. I don't think we do anything as an individual, they're always by our side, supporting each other. The Lashkey Kid program is a new program to this community. What this is, it's targeting that group of children and young adults public safety doesn't get an opportunity to engage with. We do really good in the elementary, we do good with the senior citizens, but this is targeting with those kids that go to school and come home from school without a parent. So it gives police and fire an ability to make a contact with those young adults and provide them really good information, whether it's social media, securing, first aid, all that good stuff. Also, the Police Department has asked us to join their Citizens Academy. We get two days. First day, we get to introduce what the Fire Department is to this community. The second day, we get to train them on CPR and AED, and credential them. Chief Jewell's done a great job highlighting the successes of quick first response. We are providing and giving tools to our community to make a difference in the chain of life, just by initiating AED and CPR, and being an assertive person to go get that help. The next two are software that we've added to our department. Community Connect gives our residents and our business owners a voice to communicate with the Fire Department with bank-level security. So if you have an account, for example, I live in a two-story home, and my children sleep on the second story. If you want to share that, or if you have special needs, or a pet, that information, when we're responding, we get that call, automatically pops up on our computers and starts giving that captain that information that he needs to make split decisions, to have the biggest effect. The last one is Compliance Engine. Compliance Engine ensures that life safety systems, sprinkler systems, alarms, extinguishers, are within fire code compliance. This is to support our commerce within our city. If we have false activations of alarms, false trips of suppression system, that damages our businesses within our community. We want to support that for the pure fact that 80% of small businesses within a community, once they have a significant event, they do not come back into business. We are trying to do our part to ensuring their life safety systems are within fire code to reduce impact on their operation and their business. Field of Heat event in 2024 was a great success, not just because we got many of our councilmembers to come out and experience what a firefighter is. This was a collaboration with six other cities within Scott County. This was a great team building, and I think everybody that attended really enjoyed the experience. We appreciated having them. Also, in 2024, the Fire Department took over the emergency management responsibility. One of the first things we did is we built a committee. We have some very intelligent people in city staff here that are the right people to manage a really large incident. So we took stakeholders within city staff, we built a committee. You've seen this in action with the 2024 floods. I would say that this team responded excellent, to the point, we just found out, I don't know if you know this or not, that we actually met the state threshold for a declaration of disaster. So we now are currently pulling all that information that was collected, and we're gonna try to achieve a 75% reimbursement from the state for costs incurred managing those floods. Some things are covered, some things aren't. But just those actions really pay off on a lot of the software systems that we're using. And a huge kudos to the Public Works team and Andy Weldon, with his historical knowledge of the floods, great benefit to the community.
Yeah.
Challenge is strategic planning. Our biggest strategic planning is obviously the part-time recruitment retention rate, Station Two not having those amenities to support station staff, or Fire Department staffing, and just achieving those next couple priorities that were outlined in the standard cover. Also, the Fire Department infrastructure has been a large task. City Council just recently approved a $1.1 million project to Station One to put in a fire suppression system, completely replaced the HVAC, and then Station Two, it's just lacking those essential necessities. For example, currently, we don't have showers at Station Two, so when our staff come back from a structural fire or hazardous materials, they don't get to decon. They actually bring that home to their families. So it is something we need to look at in the infrastructure for Station Two. Recruitment retention for part-time, as I explained earlier, we're trying to make whatever actions that are reasonable to continue to support the combination Fire Department. I'm really excited to see what we can do this year, so I'll update you later on that. Asset management. Again, the Fire Department has a lot of unique equipment with some very high standards. We do continue to work in collaboration with the Public Works team in really designing and developing that verb to make sure that we're all playing well and understanding the fiscal impact that our equipment has overall to this community. And then life safety inspections. The more and more we get into these buildings, the more and more it does become apparent that we do need to take a more active role. We were working with the City Clerk's Office, we found out that we have six licenses that do already require that life safety inspection that we have not been doing. So we're gonna get on top of that. We've been blessed with some very energetic firefighters, and we already have a handful that have achieved their Minnesota State Fire Inspector credentials, so we can really utilize, again, that full-time operation when they're on duty to do these life safety inspections, supporting Assistant Chief John Burrow. That was a lot. Any questions?
Any questions?
Perfect.
Well, I'm just gonna share a little bit, as Chief Brezehan knows, I got an opportunity to do a ride-along with the Fire Department, two different times. The first time, I think I was there for eight hours, and they didn't get a single call, nothing, nothing.
We call that rider syndrome.
And then, the last time I was there was just a couple of weeks ago, and a matter of a couple of hours, there were three calls. And one was a mutual aid call to Burnsville, that was the first one that we got. And so, from my perspective, it was just really interesting to see how the department does their stuff, right? I mean, you know, you watch TV, and, you know, I've always figured whatever you see on TV isn't really how it works. So just to see how the department works, and how different it was for the different calls. One was the mutual aid, one was medical, and then the other one was an alarm call. And so just to see how that all played out, it was just really interesting. And again, I have just the highest amount of respect for the department, so.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before I forget, we will go to public comments now. If you have anything that you would like to address the mayor and the city council, you can come up to the podium here. Please make sure that you give us your name and address. I think there's a sign-in sheet up there, and this is your opportunity.
Well, my name is Stephen Coons, I live at 6519 Brookline in Savage. This is my third time here now. As you will know the background here and the situation that occurred on November 6th, where my civil rights were violated, my constitutional rights were violated also that day. Come to finally resolve some things that I had to do myself, which I shouldn't have had to have done, but I finally got the Scott County Attorney to give me a letter now, saying that you're not going to prosecute me, meaning they are not gonna prosecute me, from the victim's report that I supplied to the Police Department. Why did I have to go to that extent in this situation? This is ridiculous. Essentially, with that letter, I finally got the detective to clear on the statement in the, on the victim file, that I was arrested, when I was never arrested, when I made a victim's report. That is malicious prosecution, and you guys turned the situation of the government against me. And that's where the recourse is gonna have to get, we need to get some change going on here in Appleland, this is ridiculous. I just don't want another citizen to have to go through this, or just simply exercising my right to vote, my freedom of expression, and the ability to be a human being in this country, the United States that we live in. This is ridiculous. So that's my status update at this point. I'll keep on to these meetings until we get some kind of resolution, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Seeing no one further, we'll go on to additions, modifications, and approval of the agenda. Are there, are there any additions or modifications?
Mayor, yes. Staff has one change to the agenda. We just wanted to clarify on item 7B. In the title, it states that we're approving the developers agreement. We are not approving the developers agreement. The resolution in the council memo, everything is correct, we just had one additional thing in the title.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Coughlin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the minutes. Approve the minutes of this regular city council meeting from February 18th, 2025. Are there any changes? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Coughlin, seconded by Bergstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing to conduct a public hearing to consider adopting an amended ordinance establishing fees affecting official control for calendar year 2025. And I just want to say, I believe what we're gonna do is we're gonna do the public hearing right now, and then we'll come back for the motions afterwards, because that will be at the end of the agenda when we do the general business stuff, but we'll handle the public hearing right now. Brad, am I turning this over to you?
Robbie.
Robbie, sorry.
No, that's all right. Thank you, Mayor Kelly, and council members. Tonight, we are asking to amend the 2025 fee schedule that was approved on December 16th. There were a few important items that staff felt could not wait until the end of the year, including short-term rentals, edible THC, cannabis business regulations, and temporary cannabis events, all of which are on the agenda tonight. Although I am asking for the public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, I will ask that you hold your final approval until after general business for the last item of the night.
Any questions from council? All right, I will open the public hearing. If you would like to address the council on this, again, please come to the podium, give your name and address. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And any other questions from council? I assume not. All right, we will, oops, move on to the consent agenda. These are routine items of business that are collectively presented for approval through a single motion. A council member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Under planning, adopt a resolution for approving a lease agreement with Chi Tran for Chi Hair Salon at 4735 West 123rd Street, Suite 100. Public Works, accept the revised increase in the amount Dan Patch Days Inc. is requesting in this cost-sharing agreement from $40,000 to $45,000. Under finance, adopt a resolution approving the claims listing. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled? With that, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are moving on to the general business. The first item is approve a wetland replacement plan application for Harbor Suites Senior Memory. And I believe then B is also related to this. So we'll go in the first part, which is the wetland replacement item, and then we'll move into B. So I'll let you do your presentation, Sane, and then we'll ask questions.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I'll give a brief kind of description of the kind of wetland process itself for the project, and I'll kind of hand it to Angie for the, more of the detail of the preliminary and final plat for the project. So just location-wise, it is north of 154th Street, just east of County Road 27, or Allen Boulevard is kind of the project area, kind of an odd-shaped parcel. It was a remnant parcel in terms of previous projects that had occurred in that area. Just historical impacts, you can kind of see on the left-hand side there, an arrow from 1997, before County Road 27 was completed, as well as 154th. You can kind of see the wetland is right there, obviously in 22 aerial impacts to the wetland, degradation overall, as those road improvement projects did occur in that project area. Project history in terms of the site itself, so council did approve the original wetland replacement plan back in December of 2021, so nothing new here, council's seen this before. The one thing that was a condition, if the site plan or revisions to the site plan did change, that the TEP would be reconvened and evaluate the site per the proposed layout itself. So that's what we're kind of gone through. Sale of wetland credits were approved as well on January 3rd of 2022, so we're kind of asking you to re-approve those items, just because of changes to the site. Agency comment-wise, the TEP, or Technical Evaluation Panel, did meet, includes the city staff, may also Department of Natural Resources, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, which is called Bowser, Scott Soil and Water Conservation District as well. We went through, site visited, went through analysis-wise in terms of wetland sequencing, so is there avoidance? Can you minimize the impacts to that? The overall site itself limits itself in terms of the access to the site, because we can't get access up 27, and then the alignment itself, so kind of shown in that map there. The red area is the wetland proposed to be filled, and kind of the site access for the proposed building. No additional comments or concerns regarding wetland replacement plan from the TEP. They were recommending approval of the wetland replacement and impacts to that wetland. So staff is recommending replacement of, replacement plan for Harbor Suites. We are also recommending approval of the sale of credits as well, in the amount of $37,740. So the price for that has not changed since the council approved it in 2022 with the original approval for the site. So with that, I'll hand it over to Angie for the preliminary and final plat for the site.
Okay, so then this is B, which is adopt a set of resolutions approving the preliminary and final plat acceptance of fees in lieu of parkland dedication, site plan, and an ordinance for zoning and zoning map amendment for the proposed construction of the one-story Senior Memory Care Facility building for the Harbor Suites of Savage Memory Care Project 2440, and adopt a resolution approving the summary of the ordinance and ordering the publication of said summary. Angie, we're handling these all together, it's because it's the same project.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Kelly, and council members. So as Sane mentioned, this is currently a vacant, unplatted lot here at the intersection of County Road 27 and 154th Streets, about 2.33 acres in size. And just for some background information, for those of you who might be watching at home or in the audience, the City of Savage acquired the property in 2006, intending to develop it. The City of Savage Economic Development Authority sold the property to the developer in 2018, and there was a public hearing for that. This site was most recently referred to as the Credit River Bank Site. A concept plan was submitted for a development project that included a coffee and coffee building and retail strip. building and retail strip center. A public hearing was held for that. Several residents voiced opposition regarding that project, mostly due to traffic concerns related to that. So the application did, with, the applicant did withdraw that application. So for this particular property, we're looking at the zoning map here. The zoning map does identify the property as planned mixed-use district. However, city records indicate we're not finding any historical evidence that the property was ever technically zoned. So there is a zoning request also to designate the property as R3 High Density Residential District, which permits nursing homes and senior care living facilities. So the use is a permitted use within the R3 zoning district. So just to avoid having go through a PMD process when it's not necessary for the site. And again, the purpose and intent of the R3 zoning district, the proposed use is a permitted use in the zoning district, so it does comply with that purpose and intent of the zoning district. We're looking at the future land use map here. This is a 2040 city comprehensive plan. The parcel is outlined in red. It does indicate that the property has mixed-use density. The total site area, again, 2.33 acres in size. The proposed use is actually exempt by met council's net density requirements based on how they take a look at net density in housing units. So for instance, uses like group quarters according to met council for nursing home facilities, memory care, homeless shelter facilities, and dormitories are, they're exempt from those net density requirements. So this use is also consistent with a comprehensive plan in terms of mixed-use development. It's residential while also a commercial component being proposed for the site. Here, we're looking at the proposed architectural elevations for the site. What is being proposed is 18 senior memory care units, and they range in size from about 343 to 365 square feet in size. The site plan does also include 13 surface parking spaces. There's about 4,200 square feet of indoor and outdoor usable open space total, including sidewalks, indoor activity areas, seedings and gathering areas. There is an indoor commercial kitchen, indoor trash and recycling facilities, and also a laundry salon and community bathrooms within the facility. And here, we're looking at architectural elevations of both the front image on the top, which would face the east side of the property, and the back is facing the west side of the property, that lower image on the screen. Currently, within the R3 zoning district, there are no set architectural design standards for construction, so this project is not required to comply with, you know, certain design criteria. However, the proposed construction does include hardy board lap siding on the majority of the exterior with complementary accents, including stone veneer, masonry capstone, composite stucco panel, composite trim, and glass windows around all four sides of the building. Other things, just looking at this top image here, on the southern side, this is where that enclosed trash enclosure and recycling are located in the building. This is the indoor floor plan. Basically, there's a row of units along the length of the building, both facing the west and the east sides of the property, and then the middle corridor is more where that dining and shared spaces. Here, we're looking at city code requirements for the minimum requirements by city code and what is being proposed. The site does comply with all the minimum requirements of the city code. And then here, the site plan just would point out that on the southern side of the building, there is a proposed outdoor patio area. It's a little less than 400 square feet in size. For parking, there is nine spaces required, and again, they're proposing 13 parking spaces, so they, they exceed those requirements. They also have a proposed driveway access off of 154th Street, and that does comply with the minimum width requirements, so 24-foot wide access there on the south side of the property. City code standards, parking is met. Lighting details do need to be provided yet, so the applicant will be submitting a set of revised plans to include lighting details, and we've communicated that with the applicant, and they're aware of what city code does require. And also HVAC, mechanical equipment, those details will also need to be submitted with the, with the revised plans, and then if they need to comply with screening requirements for, for those items. Here, we're looking at the utility plan. There is a biofiltration basin proposed on the south side of the site and also up on this eastern corner of the site to accommodate for stormwater management. Water services will be installed from the south side of the site and sanitary sewer from the north. This evening, the council is also being asked to consider adopting that resolution approving the wetland replacement plan application for this project and also including that purchase of wetland credits that the applicant would be purchasing for the project, as Sang presented earlier. A wetland narrative and wetland delineation report were also submitted for this project and included with the packet for the council's consideration. Here, we're looking at landscaping and tree preservation requirements. The site does comply with all those requirements for trees being removed in mitigation for tree replacement. There are some minor revisions that staff has recommended the applicant take into consideration here for sizing of mainly more so for the square footage requirements of the islands near the parking lots, so those will be modified. And some other modifications that are included for your consideration with the conditions of approval. Here, we're, just wanted to point out on this site plan that a sidewalk is being proposed, extended from the building to 154th Street, just to provide connectivity throughout the community. The preliminary plat here and phytoplat are also being considered tonight. Minor revision is changing the name to Credit River Bank and just removing plat from the name. I don't believe the county will accept the word plat in their naming mechanism. And then I won't go into detail about the findings of fact, but we are looking at council to determine findings of fact for the zoning and zoning map amendment, the preliminary plat, and also the final plat, park dedication fees. Those would be fees in lieu of land. And staff has drafted findings of fact for your consideration, and if you so choose, you could adopt those findings of fact or modify those as you, as you see fit. So findings of fact again for zoning and zoning map amendment, the preliminary plat, and then we have final plat, and those are included within the resolutions for your consideration tonight and also within the memo for you. Park dedication fees, what amount to $6,702.75 based on the net density requirements per our fee schedule. Parks Rec and Natural Resources Commission did review this at their meeting on January 27th and, and did make a motion recommending parkland dedication fees be satisfied in lieu of land, since this is not in the Parks Master Plan area. Land would not be needed. And then they also motioned to require sidewalk connection, which the, the project is including that sidewalk connection from the building to 154th Street West. Planning Commission also held a public hearing on February 6th, reviewed all applications and unanimously recommended approval. And then the Development Review Committee did recommend approval of this project with 38 conditions in total for your consideration. Those are included in all the resolutions for you as well. And then just to break it down, there's four conditions for, that basically cover all applications. Four conditions for the zoning and zoning map amendment, and then 10 conditions for the preliminary plat and 20 conditions for final plat and site plan application. And I'm happy to go through those in more detail. They are included in your packet, but if we need to come back to any of those, we can bring those back up on the screen. So with that, council, the alternatives that are considered, included in your packet for consideration are basically to adopt a set of resolutions and also the summary ordinance. Summary ordinance would require a four-fifths vote. And then number two, we could adopt with modifications. Three, deny the request, or four, table the request for additional information, and staff is recommending approval of the alternate one, and then also with the resolution for the wetland replacement plan action. So happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, I'm going to turn to council. You got A and B. I'll start with A and the wetland plan. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, anything that they want to address with that? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion on the wetland replacement. And just a reminder, it's an update, I believe, so it would be approve the attached resolution approving the replacement plan.
So moved.
Second. Motion by, excuse me, motion by Johnson, seconded, was it Craig's? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we've approved the wetlands. Now we can move to B, item number B. And does anybody have any questions, concerns that they want to talk about related to this item? Bob?
This seems too easy for this very difficult piece of property that we've been looking at for a very long time. And so we haven't really seen a big group of local citizens. I wasn't quite sure in that huge packet where it talked about community meetings and response from the community, how this is all of a sudden, everybody's happy with this, or we still have an issue.
Sure, if I could, council member Coughlin and council members. So a public hearing was held. We did notify all residents within 750 feet. By state statute or required to do so, up to 350 feet, but we stretched it out to 750 feet as a courteous, because that's who we had notified in the past with previous projects. So same people were notified with this project. We've also advertised on the Let's Talk Savage page, so that, that portal, that platform that we've been using to communicate projects with the community, we did communicate that there and updated all the information on that website. The developer also held their own neighborhood meeting, I think it was back in December. A few residents did attend that meeting, staff, I also attended that, and mainly it was, everyone was happy with the proposed project coming forward. Still some concerns about traffic, but more so related to existing conditions and not so much anything to do with the project being proposed, and they also realize it's much less of a impact potentially from a traffic generator standpoint. So people seem to be pretty pleased with it overall. We did receive like one email, some, I think that was included in the packet, just from a resident who was supportive of the project, and we really haven't heard much else, no real phone calls or emails from anyone. So it's been well received so far.
That's good. I know there's, like I said, the different uses that have been proposed over the past few years have brought a lot of excitement, and especially like the traffic report, which took up about 100 pages in this packet, again. But I just wanted to make sure that some of those issues that we had in the past have been smoothed out and resolved, and I think this is a good compromise use of this property and a, and a need in our community, so.
Stacy.
I, I agree with what Bob just said, and I know that we're looking at what's presented in front of us, but because we've had so many conversations about that intersection and because we're not showing any changes traffic-wise there, I'm just curious and I'm hoping I can ask, is that still in the city's plan to continue to look at that? And what, what does that look like, even if it's independent?
Sure.
Of this particular, particular project?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, council member Craig's. We do have that intersection within our CIP, so update, that's a more regional need for County Road 27 and 154th. So we do have the CIP for 2026. Now, funding-wise, has not yet been identified. It's to be determined, so we have to work to do in terms of getting that project moving forward, but we do have plans for that. The one caveat is with this project, we are obtaining additional roadway easement because we understand that we have to expand the roadway to the, to the north to provide additional stacking, turning movements, and then the dedicated turn lanes as well. So as part of this plat, we are obtaining dedicated roadway easement with the project itself. And the one thing too with the traffic study for this, this use, it was very low usage or very low intensity usage. I think the PM or the AM peak was two to three vehicles that are going into the site, so very low. So we are revising some striping within the roadway. There is hatching currently. We are providing enough stacking for maybe one or two vehicles to make that turn to get them out of the through lane. But you're right, from a construction standpoint, it is going to be minimized within the roadway itself.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, it's a great solution.
Can I echo that? Because as we've mentioned in the comment, that there's been a lot of energy generated around this particular parcel, and some of us have certainly gotten to hear from our residents on concerns about what this is being developed into. And I do think it's a really interesting solution for this particular parcel, which I will remind people is a remnant parcel. It, it's this weird-shaped parcel because they moved the road. County Road 27 is where it is, and it was east of there, and it left this weird shape that the city inherited as a part of that road construction project. So this is a really, I think, interesting solution for, for doing that. So, all right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we need anything more technical? Are we good? All right. Motion by Coughlin, seconded by Bergstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I think with both of those actions, then we have taken care of both A and B. I want to make sure that we're all good? All right.
And then if I could just mention that we're still working through the developers agreement with the applicant, so that will be coming forward as a separate item, tentatively March 17th, but to be determined yet.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate that. Oops. Thank you for coming. All right, we'll move on to C, approve an ordinance related to short, oh, excuse me, related to short-term rental and adopt a resolution approving the summary of the ordinance and ordering a publication of said summary. Mitch!
Good evening, Mayor and council. Excuse me. Dealing with a bit of a scratchy throat, so I apologize. I got my water here too, so, yeah. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Mitch Johnson. I'm the Code Enforcement Coordinator with the City of Savage. And tonight, I'm here to talk about repeal and replacing Title IX, Chapter 103 of the city code, which is in regards to short-term rentals. So tonight, staff is requesting that the council consider adopting an ordinance to repeal and replace this code, and then also to authorize the publication of the summary ordinance, which would require four-fifths vote tonight. So as a kind of a big picture, what staff is proposing tonight is to allow owner-occupied short-term rentals after the issuance of a short-term rental license. I know we've talked a lot about this over the years. I think we're approaching the two-year mark on this project, so I know many of you are very familiar with this. So this whole process started back in the summer of 2023 when council directed staff to kind of initiate some preliminary discussions, do some research. What would it look like if we did allow short-term rentals? We've been very busy since then. Just kind of outlining a few of the steps we've taken. We've done lots of research, looking at the current regulations, the history, code application enforcement. We've looked at owner-occupied versus unoccupied properties. We've researched 10 other cities in the South Metro area, looking at what other communities do, how it's working for them. We presented at three Economic Development Commission meetings discussing kind of the commercial aspect of this project. We've done a lot of community outreach through Let's Talk Savage and also just answering questions and emails throughout the last year and a half. In the memo, staff's memo, you'll see we kind of looked at some policy objectives. How can we accomplish those things and kind of satisfy? And then two previous council work sessions, we've also discussed this topic. So we feel like we kind of have a refined proposed draft, kind of after So we feel like we kind of have a refined proposed draft, kind of after all of our conversations for you tonight. The current code right now prohibits any short-term rentals in a residential neighborhood for a period of 15 days or less. If you recall, this was adopted back in December of 2015. At the time, from what I understand and reading some minutes and things, there's maybe a handful in the community. But there's one specific property that generated a lot of complaints. From what I understand, they had an outdoor pool. It was kind of the party house every weekend. It was really disturbing the neighborhood and kind of the culture of the neighborhood and the adjacent properties. So at that time, the council made a decision to just prohibit all short-term rentals. If they had a licensing process in place back then, the city could have addressed that one property and kind of the unaffected properties could continue to operate. But since there was no licensing framework in place at the time, it was kind of a total ban, if you will. One of the things that staff is proposing tonight is to having a licensing process in place. So if we do get a property like that in the future, we don't need to do a one cover-all for the entire city. Kind of gives the city some authority to just address that one property and the property owners. So starting in August of 2023 is when code enforcement started tracking the short-term rental complaints. Since then, staff has received, or the city has received 13 complaints about 10 different properties. Our first step is always education. When we get the complaint, we make touch base with the property owner, educate them on the ordinances. A lot of times, they're just not aware of what's going on. We did issue one citation for ongoing violations. Once the citation was issued, they did cease operation of the short-term rentals. Last week, staff did just a quick online search of some popular short-term rental websites. And from what we found, there's currently eight active listings in the city right now. There's a brief chart on the screen. It's also in staff's memo. I did not call out the specific addresses, just stretch as kind of a general guide. You can see that right now, three are advertising non-owner occupied. So people are able to rent the entire property while the rest are owner-occupied. One thing I would like to point out is when you look at the category, the column of duration of operation. I did speak to the property owner on McCall Drive as well as Ridgewood Lane. And they clarified that they have not been operating in the City of Savage for that long, that they, the property on McCall Drive has had some short-term rentals in other cities in the metro with their rental license and, you know, following all the rules. The property owner on Ridgewood Lane was in Wisconsin and operating past short-term rentals. So while their listings state that it was that long, it's just not in the city. You can also see I put the ratings on there based on the website scores of the reviews that the guests are leaving. You can see pretty high reviews for all the properties. And I also put the number of reviews, so you can see how frequent are these happening. The final column, I did work with the police department to get a summary of police calls and responses since August of '23 to those properties. So you can see some are zero, some are minimal. I would like to point out the property on McCall Drive, even though there's six of them, three of them are related to the same civil dispute. So basically, half of those calls were one civil dispute between two properties on a verbal contract dispute. The other ones, staff didn't find, based on the information we received, staff didn't find anything related to loud noise complaints or some of the other complaints that other cities are dealing with, you know, some of these unlicensed short-term rentals. Mostly, you know, there's some traffic ordinance complaints that I'm assuming is probably like a winter parking complaint. One of them, a dog locked the property owner out of a bedroom, so they couldn't get into the bedroom to get the dog. So while there are complaints, you know, if more people are visiting these, you know, there might be more calls. But I think it's probably safe to say it's consistent with maybe most properties in the city. Throughout this process, staff has been looking at other cities. We pulled out 10 cities that are surrounding Savage and the South Metro area. They're listed on the screen. The full comparison is in the staff's memos and attachment, so you could see them. But just to kind of summarize, zero of the 10 cities allow short-term rentals under 15 days without a license, which is where the City of Savage would currently fit in. Six of the 10 do allow them if they have a license. And if they're owner-occupied, only one city does not require a license. So one other city has a designation that if they're owner-occupied, they don't need to obtain that short-term rental license. But all the others do if they do allow short-term rentals. Throughout this process, like I said, community engagement has been a big tool for staff to kind of gather some insight of what's actually happening in the community, what property owners want, what their neighbors want. And kind of we've really been working out a solution, how can we best meet the needs of everyone? That's kind of been our main goal throughout this whole process. One of the tools we used for community outreach was to just conduct a two-week-long survey. It was an online survey. We had 385 responses, which staff thought that was a good response rate. 61% of the respondents said that the city should not allow them at all. About half, 48%, thought that owners should be required to stay on-site, so to be owner-occupied. 87% thought that the city should require a license in order to operate. And 78% think the city should put some sort of limit on the number of short-term rentals that are in the city. So the full survey results are also included in the packet tonight. Along with the survey responses, staff did pull out five comments that through Let's Talk Savage that residents or respondents left. You can see kind of ranges, you know, one thought, eh, it's a good idea as long as it's through a reputable company. Some people think, don't let them, don't have them at all. You know, they're a detriment to the neighborhoods. One person, you know, kind of said, hey, I understand the whole party house issue. But if the homeowner is there, maybe there's more responsibility they can have. If they're just renting out a bedroom or basement, it should be okay. Last week, once staff's memo was approved, we did send out a blast through Let's Talk Savage. Just kind of, we've been updating that project page throughout the last, you know, year and a half or so. We did receive five additional comments over the weekend. There was a couple that were supportive. One person thought that they should be owner-occupied, just based on their experience of renting them out on the North Shore. They thought nobody would ever want to go to an owner-occupied property. But through our research and talking with other people who are currently operating in the city, they do have people that are interested for various reasons to have a shared accommodation. In staff's memo, we've listed a long list of kind of policy objectives. We did that a couple of months ago, just to say, what are we trying to accomplish here? And then what can we do to ensure that those objectives are met? But just in summary, I think the big thing is just giving residents the opportunity to use their homes as short-term rentals, whether it's to generate income, fill unused bedrooms. Or even one person I talked to said that they believe they can provide an experience to the guests, that they wouldn't get out of hotel. You know, kind of that local tour guide recommendations of restaurants. And I think they just enjoyed having the company. So how can we do that while also minimizing the risk of public nuisances to adjacent properties and neighbors? And then ultimately, also just ensuring the safety of the guests who are coming and staying at those places? So staff believes that we can accomplish all of those things just by adopting a formal license requirement with the condition that the property owner must be present, while also establishing a process for suspending and revoking those short-term rentals if we, licenses, if we do encounter a troublesome or nuisance property. Again, to just work with that one property, not a blanket code. So as we, big discussion, we've been talking a lot about throughout this process is owner-occupied, unoccupied, non-owner occupied. Staff believes, you know, if a property is properly managed and the owner's taking responsibility and working with the guests, we really do believe that there can be a minimum impact on the neighbors. You know, if it's one person staying in a bedroom, we believe that the giraffe that we proposed tonight really addresses those big party issues and the other issues that other cities in the metro have encountered. And so basically, our proposal tonight is just that property owners, that must be their principal dwelling unit, and they must be present while the guests are at the property. We had lots of discussions on the enforcement side. You know, do they have to be within 10 minutes, 10 miles? What if they have to go here? And there's so much gray area that staff finally decided, working with the police department, that just says, if they're there, they have to be there. Now, we're not going to do random checks, just knocking on doors, hey, are you here? No, it would be if there is an emergency call or a loud party complaint, you know, during quiet hours. Please come, find out it's a short-term rental. Where's the property owner? Oh, they're in Florida. Okay, you know, let's deal with this issue. And then discussing kind of that short-term rental license, we would require that in order to operate in the city. Again, just to ensure the safety of the guests, manage any potential disruptions to the community. The biggest thing, you know, we kind of hinted or talked a little bit about previously, was just holding those hosts and property owners accountable with the city. That gives us the ability to either suspend or to revoke a license throughout that process. I did put a kind of a quote there from the Planning Director of New Brighton. It was a great article through the League of Minnesota Cities. And one of the quotes they put is just, "The key in all this throughout a licensing process is just establishing some sort of legal authority to end the use if problems arise." So that's really what we're trying to accomplish through this license requirement. So what staff is proposing for the short-term rental license is just similar with other licenses that the city already requires. This would be kind of the process. Basically, the property owner, if they're interested in, you know, creating or operating a short-term rental license, they would submit an application to the city clerk. The police would do background checks pursuant to state law on any adults who live in the residence as their principal dwelling. The fire marshal or the fire department would conduct a life safety inspection, looking for violations of the state fire code, making sure that they have smoke detectors, CO2 detectors, escapability, egress windows with the ladders, that they can get out safety in the event of an emergency. We've talked in the past about putting a cap on the number of licenses. The last work session, we talked about having measurable distances between properties or between short-term rentals. There wasn't a consensus that that was a good idea. So one of the things that staff is proposing tonight in order to meet that goal of putting a cap on it is to initially put a max on 12 short-term rental licenses. We came up with that unit or that number just based on one short-term rental unit per 1,000 dwellings in the city. We're just under 12,000 dwellings in the city right now. So that's our starting point. We could always increase or decrease that number as we see fit. In the proposed draft, the city would keep a waiting list if we had more than 12 applicants, so that, you know, if we come back and say, hey, we've got 50 people on the waiting list, we're looking to increase this, we can come back at that time. So, and licenses would be valid for one year. So, and staff is also open to discussing that number with you tonight at the conclusion, if you think there should be more or less. The only other proposed licensing condition that I'd like to call out tonight, you know, maybe that you've already read in the proposed draft, is just having the maximum occupancy for individuals and vehicles between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Through the licensing process and the inspection, we would have a max occupancy of two adults per bedroom plus two additional adults. So if it was a four-bedroom house, you'd have your eight plus two more, the 10 total occupants. That would include the property owner, any other adults that are living there. Children would not be counted towards the max occupancy. As far as vehicles go, it'd be two vehicles plus one for each garage stall that would be parked on the property. So if you have a three-car garage plus the two, you could have five vehicles on the property. Property owners throughout the process have a right to request additional occupants or additional vehicles based on the size of their driveway. Maybe they have a long driveway or more space. The reason we're putting these conditions in there is again to just address those complaints that we could get of a large party after hours, even if they're not being loud. But, you know, the police respond to a ton of vehicles there, you know, they can kind of address that issue to clear out the property at that time. One of the other conditions I'd like to call out tonight, that if a short-term rental license is revoked, staff is proposing that the licensee would not be able to submit another application for a short-term rental unit for five years. We believe that that would hold the property owners and the hosts accountable for their property to ensure compliance and livability for the neighbors. As far as the proposed license fees, staff today is proposing a, it'd be a $150 application investigation fee. And this is just to cover staff's time in processing the application through the city clerk's office, police department conducting the background checks, and then the fire department to conduct that life safety inspection of the dwelling unit. That $150 application and investigation fee is non-refundable and would be due at the time of submission. Once they kind of went through that process and they were, met all the requirements and were ready for that, the city clerk's office then would process the license and issue the license. And then the license fee would be $25. I have put on the bottom of the screen other license fees that the city charges for similar licenses. You can see for solicitors and massage therapists, it's the same $150 investigation fee. And then the license fees vary. So staff is kind of going right in the middle with that license fee of $25. So in conclusion, the city attorney has reviewed the proposed draft that we have in front of you tonight. Staff, there's multiple options in your memo and on the screen. Staff is recommending alternative number one, which would be to repeal and replace Chapter 103 related to short-term rentals, and then again, to authorize the publication of the summary ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We can go from there.
Thanks, Mitch. Any questions, comments, concerns? Bob?
I always got to be the bad guy first. In general, I believe licensing is a good thing and it'd be nice to see this allowed in our city again. But there's two points that I still don't, do not support. One of them, you had mentioned, was the maximum of 12 units, one per 1,000. That's 0.1% of our community. And as you see, that we currently have rule breakers that don't know the rules, that they can't have one now. We've only got, you know, maybe eight to 10 at any time on a regular basis. But talking about the small business and giving that allowance, that if somebody did want to do this, it would be allowed. And to have that limitation, saying all of a sudden, well, we've hit our 12, somebody here can do it, but you can't. And with such a low threshold, I think that's unreasonable. And I don't think it, that we should have that amount set. I don't see this being opened up all of a sudden, now everybody knows we can have rentals and now we're going to have 100 rentals, short-term rentals in the City of Savage. And then all of a sudden, 10 in one community. That's, that's not really going to happen. Industry standards have already set. You know, this is an established kind of thing, whereas in 2015, it was a problem and the industry was just still trying to figure out what's going on. And I think it's gotten to itself, regulating, and people are responsible and they, they want to get a good rating, except for that one property. So, but with licensing and proper licensing and knowledge of it, we would have the ability to turn off that one bad one. And so I'm all in support of having the licensing, background checks, life safety checks, certain levels of rules and regulation. But I would like to see the quantity eliminated because I don't believe, maybe you can clarify. Does any other community set a limit to the number in their community?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that answer for you now. I do believe communities do cap them, but I don't know, I couldn't tell you which communities and what standards they follow.
Okay, because when I talk about industry standards, I also, with comparison with other communities, why would we limit it to a certain amount if that's not really considered to be an issue in most communities? And I don't see the basis for actually having that limit. Like, we're afraid that it's going to jump to 100 instead of, at any one time, there may be 12 during the holidays or maybe 20 during a Vikings event or something like that. You know, but they're not on all the time. So I would like to see that number eliminated.
Okay, that capacity eliminated?
Personally.
Yep, sounds good.
The other thing was we talked about owner-occupied versus owner-present. I support the owner-occupied, where we don't have a business who owns an unoccupied house that they're using as a short-term, you know, just like a rental-only. So, you know, another business around. But if it's owner-occupied, if they live there, then it's, you know, they're doing their own little entrepreneurship, small business. But to have them owner-present, to ask them to be there to babysit them is unreasonable. And once again, it's not an industry standard. There are no other communities. There are no other communities that require owner-present. And so to be consistent with the industry and with comparisons of other communities that are making this work, the owner-present is an onus that is too big of a burden to be put on, and I believe that owner-present should be eliminated also. So those are the two things that I don't support in this ordinance. Otherwise, pretty much, I say, yeah, let's do it, but I can't support voting for this with those two items.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. All right. Who wants to go next? Matt?
I think overall, I like how the ordinance is written. I think it makes sense, like the homework you've done, the clarity of what do you have to do to be a renter? Appreciate the fact you're trying to not have big corporations do this. It's truly owner-present, owner-occupied. I would agree with this. I think that's the importance of these communities, the neighborhoods that we live in, is that we bought homes in these communities because they were homes, single-family homes, and to make the shift to allow renters to be there, I think does require the owner to be present to ensure that that home is maintained, that there's pride in property that's consistent. I think one of the things that has degraded this community is rental property in general, when renters don't care for the homes that they're renting. And the owners who own these homes are unengaged. They don't take care of the property. So I don't want us to have another instance in this community where that continues to be a problem. So I would definitely think we should keep the owner-present, owner-occupied. I think that's an important part of this ordinance, what makes it unique. In terms of the limiting the numbers of, I got nothing to base anything on. I don't know. What I do know, though, it's harder to take things back than to give more of, and so then I do appreciate at least some flag in the sand, saying, you know, let's try it out. If we have that many more, double that next year, then let's look at it. I don't have a problem changing it, but I appreciate the fact that staff has gone to the effort of trying to be cautious, dipping the toe in the water, if you will, in this whole ordinance process. I like how it's written.
All right, who's next? Stacy?
I'll go next, because I'll echo that. I agree, and I feel like we've had a lot of conversations about this, many, many, many conversations about this. There's been a lot of input that has come in from the community, and I think what you've created builds in, you know, good consensus of everything that we've had conversations about. So I would also agree that I would support it written as-is.
On both of the points that Bob brought up?
On both points, yeah.
I just want to make sure that, yep. Megan?
Can you clarify the difference between owner-occupied and owner-present?
Yes. We've had many discussions. When council was first interested in exploring owner-occupied, the big, owner-occupied, the big question was, well, what is occupied?
Right.
You know, and so, and through conversations with the, you know, police department and the lieutenant, or, excuse me, the captains that we met with, we kind of just went through the scenario. If you got called to a loud party complaint, and you're there at 11 o'clock at night, and you're going to shut this down, and the owner's supposed to be there, but they call and say, "Well, I'm in Brainerd, I'm on my way down," or "I'm in Florida." Well, is that occupied? Even if that's their principal dwelling, if they're out of town that weekend and want to rent it out. So we have defined it as owner-occupied, and rather than having that gray area of what is their exact location, we've just said that they have to be there if there's renters there. I can't speak for the police officers who would be investigating. One of the property owners who's currently operating now a short-term rental, I talked to her today, and she had that same concern, like, you know, people come and go, I come and go, how am I always supposed to be here? You know, and I just kind of spoke to the point, you know, I'm not the officer who would respond, but if you had to run down the street to Hy-Vee to pick up groceries, and you're gone for 10 minutes and something happened, I think it'd be up to the police officer's discretion to, you know, use their best judgment in that situation. So even though we're saying that they would have to be occupied while the transient's are there, the renters are there, we're just trying to eliminate that gray area, again, just to make it clear from an enforcement standpoint, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That helps. I like the way it's written. I think, like you said, there's, it's harder to take something back before you put something out there. I think it's probably good to have some sort of limit, just so that we can see, like Matt had said, if we get 25 this year, then we can look at bumping that number up. But I think all of us are living here because we are owning our homes, and I would not want, where I live, a loud party house, three at a time or four at a time on the same block. So I think it's fine as-is. I think we can adjust it if there's more than 12 that come through. Those are my things.
All right, well, I'll put my two cents in. I also am okay with how it's written. And, well, I am, understanding of Bob's point about limiting it to 12, I appreciate the flag in the sand. I appreciate the staff trying to say, okay, we're going to say, here's where we're going to start. We don't want to overreach and go too far and then try and bring that back if we find out we have way too many properties that we're trying to manage and we're having issues with. 12 may be light, we may see that we may want to increase that, but I balance that with 61% of our residents don't think we should have short-term rentals in here, in the city. So we have more than half of our residents who don't want this, right? And so I'm very cautious about trying to allow this in town when we don't have it. And I do believe that most of the reasons why people don't want it is what we've talked about. It's, I don't want the party house next door. And Matt is absolutely right. We do have rental issues that we're trying to work on and trying to figure out how we're going to do that. So I think how this is drafted is really well-done, in trying to find that balance between allowing our residents who maybe can do this, who can provide that experience, I love that idea of providing the experience and being the host and that kind of stuff. I think that's cool. With the, I was on the council when we had the complaints, and we initiated the first ordinance, because it was the party house, and that family was trying to generate revenue, and very sympathetic to what they wanted to do, but yet, for everybody else in the cul-de-sac, it was a problem, you know? And so at that point, we just said no, and now we're coming back and revisiting it. And I have no problem coming back and revisiting if we decide maybe we move it to 15, maybe, you know, I mean, something like that. But it's a lot easier to start with a smaller number, see how it's working, see how it's operating, and then see if we need to tweak it and fix it. The other thing that I appreciate with the not owner-present is from the police perspective is that that's not gray, right? I mean, they're there or they're not, you know, but if you start trying to work into the ordinance, is all of the, well, they can run to the grocery store, but they can't run to the liquor store, and they can, you know, that gets to be really problematic for the police who are trying to enforce our ordinance. And when the reality of the situation is, when they're coming to enforce the ordinance, there's a problem. Somebody has complained, and the more black and white we can make it for our officers when they show up to that call, I think it will be easier in the end to enforce this and make sure that, like I said, we're dancing that very, you know, thin line between the community that people want, this quiet, lovely community, versus the, you know, the party tone. And so, yeah, I think you've done a really nice job, Mitch, in trying to craft this ordinance to try and meet some of these objectives and goals.
And I want to echo that too with you about, it would probably create more, the owner-present, more responsible owners, because if that's what you want to do, you know that you can just say, hey, I'm running to the store, I will be back, leave your phone, leave your cell phone number if there's any questions. And yes, I think it takes a burden off of the police department to not have that gray area as well.
Any further additional comments, questions, concerns? I will entertain a motion.
Well, I'm not sure it was written correctly, but I'll make a motion adopting the ordinance to repeal and replace city code Title 19, Chapter 103, related to short-term rentals, and authorize the publication of the summary ordinance as presented here tonight.
I will second the motion.
Motion by Johnson, seconded by Bergstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, and I believe that's a fourth, fifth vote for both the ordinance and the publication. Thank you, Mitch. All right, moving on to D, adopt a resolution amending city code Title 11, Chapter 123, adopt an ordinance for cannabis business regulations, city code Title 11. And I'm just going to turn it over to you, Robbie.
I'm back to talk about cannabis registration, again. Little bit of history, February 3, I did bring this to council, or staff brought it to council, asking to repeal and replace city code Title 11, Chapter 123, titled Edible THC, and we wanted to replace it with the new cannabis retail business regulations. On February 4, the Office of Cannabis Management announced that applications for lower potency hemp edible manufacturer licenses and the lower potency hemp retailer license will not be accepted until the fall of 2025. February 10, we discussed this at the work session, we discussed extending the sunset deadline for Chapter 123 edible THC, and consider adopting Chapter 124 cannabis business regulations, and we also discussed the parameters around temporary cannabis events. Considering the OCM timeline and to ensure that we have THC license structure maintained in place, we are no longer asking for repeal and replacement of Chapter 123. Instead, we are asking for council to adopt a resolution amending city code Title 11, Chapter 123 edible THC, to extend the sunset deadline. We are asking to adopt an ordinance for city code Title 11, Chapter 124 cannabis business regulations, and we are asking to adopt a resolution approving the summary of the ordinance and ordering the publication of the summary. When developing Chapter 124, city staff worked with our attorneys and followed OCM guideline and the state statute. It primarily reflects, Chapter 124 primarily reflects the change in terminology from THC to cannabis and low potency hemp. We have already had someone come in who is interested in a microbusiness. So it's really important that we keep that 123 and separate out 124. We have established the fees in our fee schedule, and directed by council, we included special considerations. The hours of operation mirror our current savage liquor hours. Staff will do the preliminary compliance check prior to issuing retail registrations. That is not required, but it is within statute. Council chose not to impose buffers or limits, so we did not include them in our ordinance. And council would like to allow onsite consumption of non-smoke-producing hemp products, and temporary cannabis events should be consistent with our current special event policies. As part of the temporary cannabis event, I know there's been a lot of questions around this, so hopefully I can answer them tonight. As part of the process, the event organizer will need to show the state proof of local approval prior to getting their license from the state. So they will come to us, fill out an application. We anticipate OCM will be taking special event applications later this summer, so we have a little bit of time to kind of get our final special cannabis event in place. As part of the application process, an applicant can ask for onsite consumption approval. That will be a checkbox on the application with the caveat that it is coming to council for approval, and council has the final say. The onsite use, if it is approved, needs to be in a designated area not viewable from the public. Once they complete the application with us, the city will verify that it meets our local requirements. It will be reviewed by our zoning administrator, police department, and public works department, and we will come up with a process and a fee. This legal language essentially says that the council's decision to allow or disallow onsite consumption at a temporary event supersedes the cannabis business license, which means if the business is licensed to have onsite consumption, that doesn't automatically transfer over to the temporary event, that would still come to you for approval. It also means that if they, if the business does not have a license for onsite consumption, but somebody in their special event group does, that would still not transfer, it would still be up to the council to determine onsite consumption. And then I just included the cannabis business regulations review. We went over this the last time. Hasn't really changed. I just was wondering with all the new things, if you had any questions? And that's really all I have on this.
Thank you. All right. Any questions? Here again, one other topic we've talked about a lot.
Yeah, if you can go back, Robbie, back to the previous page, or page before, maybe, it was about consumption being out of sight, maybe it's pretty.
Yes, viewable from public space.
Yeah, I'm not crazy about that one.
That is actually part of state statute.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Surprise!
Interesting. Okay, ain't no comment then, I guess.
All right, anybody else? Bob?
At our last council workshop, there were a couple of questions brought up from the legal aspect that were kind of like, needed some more review, and I think we've got some feedback on the email thread, but if I can ask council to maybe address a couple of those things, like the idea of smoke consumption, like if somebody could be in the smoking area of an establishment that isn't a seller, could, because it's allowed use, could somebody actually smoke at the outside smoking area at a bar?
You want the city attorney?
Those were a couple of questions that we had kind of asked, and because that kind of starts to really muddle up this ability of what's allowed and what's not, and whether or not the state statute would allow the consumption of smoke versus non-smoke items in their event, or if that wasn't even, if that's not something that's even allowed on the state statute, then it's kind of redundant to put it in ours.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dan.
Sure. Councilmember Coughlin, Mayor Kelly, it's kind of two issues there, two questions. First is, there's a blanket prohibition over smoking, and in any instance that would violate the Clean Air Indoor Act. So that's the first thing. The second is that municipalities have been given the power to say, no consumption in public spaces. We have done that in Chapter 136, which was previously approved by this council a year and a half ago. Further, in 124.06, we say, there's no use of the cannabis flower in public places or places of public accommodation, which would be restaurants and things like that, unless the premises is an establishment or an event licensed to permit onsite consumption. There are only two licenses, and I checked with OCM, that allow onsite consumption, and of those two licenses, none of them allow smoke. So it would only be edible cannabinoids. So we should not have any situation where somebody is on a patio smoking.
Okay, so I understand the Clean Indoor Air Act, but many restaurants and bars do have an outdoor smoking patio? do have an outdoor smoking patio?
Correct.
So that would not be allowed. I just want to make sure that, uh, if that's considered a public accommodation, even though it's not a public space, does that
Yes, restaurant.
disallow that?
Yes, we are disallowing it.
We are disallowing?
We are disallowing it.
Okay, so, um, having it written in here again, to not allow it for temporaries is, it's not allowed by state statute anyway. So, um, this thing about sometimes adding superfluous, um, wording when it's already controlled and dictated at state statute level, I, I want to make sure we're not just adding fluff to it.
So I think we're talking about two different things here. The first is that you're talking about the temporary cannabis events.
Mm-hmm.
That's within the statute. In a separate section within the statute, we are also talking about use in public places. And to, what I think is, to make it clear, the direction of the council is that you cannot use the flower in a public place or place of public accommodation. But we do have the caveat, unless it's an establishment or an event licensed to permit onsite consumption for an adult. So right now, the way the statutes are written, there are only two licenses which allow onsite consumption. Neither of those permit smoke. If that were to change in the future, then we may have an opportunity to allow it. Similarly, council is given the authority to allow, um, temporary cannabis events. Right now, we have said, no smoking. This says the same thing. So I don't know that it's superfluous. Um, we do have it in Chapter 136, which I think we added immediately when the first laws came around. Council said, we don't want it. The majority of the council said, no, thank you. And so that's what was passed. Um, but we can certainly, uh, remove 124.06, if that's the council's pleasure or directive.
That was my other question. 124.06 is just another redundancy from 136, saying you can't smoke in public.
I do think it does clarify a little bit about referencing the places of public accommodation, where we don't, I don't believe we have that in 136, but, um, I understand what you're saying. And if, if council says, I don't like it, then we can take it out.
I would, I would rather have it say, reference per another section. It may be a note that it.
So the reason it used to have a reference to 136 in there, it actually worked against what you're talking about, because, um, we wanted to make sure that if someone has the right to do it under a license now, or in the future that does permit the smoking, that we are consistent. So we initially had a reference to 136, but we reviewed it and said, that is actually contradictory. We want to make sure that if those persons or establishments are licensed to do it, I don't have a clause in there that says you can't under 136. That was the reason for the removal.
I just like consistency.
I'm doing my best.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other further comments, questions, concerns? Stacy?
I'll comment. Um, I, yes, we have had many, many, many conversations about this. Um, I would support keeping in the language about the use in public places, because I think oftentimes, if you're pointing to other places, people don't look at other places. And so it does provide additional clarity when they come to the city and they say, hey, what can I do? And it's in there versus somebody saying, well, I don't see it in there. So, um, I would support keeping it in there and keeping it as is.
Anyone else? Comments, questions, concerns?
Like how it's written.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion amending city code Title 11 by modifying city code Title 11. That's a repeat of that scene. Uh, Chapter 123, and consider adopting proposed cannabis business regulation, city code Title 11, Chapter 124, and adopt a resolution approving the summary and ordering the publication of said summary as presented tonight.
I'll second. You can second.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Motion by Johnson, seconded by Bergstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And Robbie, I think you're up again.
I am. Um, I will now ask you to approve that resolution and, um, summary ordinance for the fee schedule.
Are there any questions, concerns, comments on the fee schedule? Bob?
During our public, uh, open public forum, uh, we didn't actually show them, I mean, I saw them in, in, in my packet and felt comfortable. Not that we had anybody up actually talking about it, but is there any, any highlights that maybe, uh, you want to tell us about that, uh,
Yeah.
kind of stand out? Uh, because otherwise, it, most of it was pretty much, you know, updates for current needs and cost of
Let me find my memo.
living increase. I, I don't have any issues with it. I just thought for, for public.
Yeah, and this was posted on our website, and it was, um, the summary ordinance was posted in the paper. Or no, it will be posted in the paper, but it was posted on our website. Um, the ones that I pulled out was, uh, there was just a wording change on page two, um, related to park fees that changed the wording from commercial to non-residential. Meters and part accessories, they rounded to zero, um, for their section after they said they weren't going to round to zero. Uh, and then we inserted the short-term rentals, which we talked about tonight. Temporary cannabis cannabis event. Originally, I had thought that it could just fall under the special event fees, but I separated it out in case we want to make any changes. Right now, it's the same fees as our special event, but just in case we want to make any changes in the future. Uh, THC license fees were put back in because we originally thought the state was taking it over. That's not happening until the fall. And then we had the cannabis civil penalty was originally lived in our ordinance, and I thought it was better to move it over to our fee schedule, so we didn't have to change an ordinance when that changed. And then the last piece was just, um, Parks and Recreation reinstated the ELC wedding package. Um, that was, that was a communication error, that that got taken out.
Thank you.
And that's really the, the highlights.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the fee schedule?
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Coughlin, seconded by Bergstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city council report. Anybody have any, Bob, go ahead.
Uh, I had the opportunity to, uh, attend virtually the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, uh, meeting on the 19th of February. Uh, one of the highlights that they talked about was a bus rapid transit route they're looking at along Highway Ford, or County Road 42, uh, from Mystic Lake to, uh, Apple Valley. Kind of like an end-to-end destination. And I said, well, what about Savage? You're driving right through. They said, well, it's a BRT. It's a BRT. I said, well, how many people are going just from Mystic Lake to Apple Valley? Mystic Lake has their own buses for that kind of stuff. I see them on the road all the time. So, you know, it's not like it should be a bus route that, um, stops every three blocks. But you're going through, you know, Savage, Burnsville, uh, what else is in, and even, is there something between Burnsville and Apple Valley? I don't know. But, but the idea that they're, they're doing a 12-mile run, and they don't stop once or twice along the way, I, I really got up on the soapbox and said, you guys, you can't do that to us. We have a, right along 42, we do have a stop for, uh, for a parking ride. You got to stop in Savage. So I really, uh, got on their case about that. Um, and they, they said they would consider it. We'll see if that happens. Uh, it's still, uh, it's still in the, uh, planning proposal development stage, but after I said, uh, stood up and said that, uh, Burnsville actually stood up and said, yes, by the way, you're passing through one of our highest commercial areas right there, where, where the malls at, and everything to the north, you know, for, for almost a mile, just a huge commercial area. And you're not stopping there either. So, so I think that got some good traction for, uh, for Savage. That's the only thing I went to.
All right. Stacy?
Thank you, Bob, for going to the MBTA meeting. As I was out of commission, so I have no other reports.
Megan? Matt?
I have two. I'm absent a bit. Uh, first one's I-35W Alliance, uh, February meeting. We had a president presenter, uh, by the name of Dr. Nicole Morris, here from Minnesota. She's with, uh, the Human Factors Safety Lab. She's actually a psychologist of all things. But I think what was interesting is what their goal is to really, uh, apply human needs, people's needs to design. And one of the things they're focusing on is crash data, and the importance of officers, uh, actually, uh, writing up the crash data. Because they utilize that to understand road safety, intersect safety, and all that. What they've seen is a reduction in that over time, more because of just laboriousness of it.
A reduction in the reporting?
In the reporting.
Interesting.
Yeah, so Dr. Morris and her team, I think, have created a, a new, uh, tool, essentially, that is more intuitive, less burdensome. And so now the goal is to get that out and help ensure that, that officers are actually recording the data from the accidents at these intersections, so roads can be planned and designed appropriately. I thought that was pretty interesting. Uh, the other big update, um, well, I think we already know about it, it's the, uh, process the MNDOT's doing through Highway 13, from Savage all the way up into Burnsville, uh, which then applies to the next meeting, which was I, which was the Burnsville-Savage meeting. And city Burnsville kind of reinforced the fact that they don't feel there'll be any federal funds for their 13-niclet, uh, intersection. So they're busy trying to corral more money for that intersection. Um, and the other thing, oh, the other, the other, I think, big item that's very much local is McCall Road. Burnsville's doing their judicial road-McCall, uh, intersection. Actually, they add a stoplight there, um, which will certainly slow down traffic through that, that zone. And their roadwork will go all the way up through Savage up to the bridge. It's just a kind of a common terminus point for the road reconstruction project there as well. Well, that was really about it, let's say.
No, I think that was about it, yeah.
The highlights, at least.
And we talked about the water.
Savage.
Our Savage need for the water treatment, um, especially through the summer with water treatment plant.
Filter replacement.
Down as we're doing that filter replacement project and, and our need for water. And, um, I, we've just had a really good working relationship with Burnsville over the years with the, with that whole project, with the Kramer Water Quarry and getting our water and all of that kind of stuff. So for me to join that meeting for the first time, um, you know, it just seemed seamless.
Yeah.
You know, to, to
Yeah.
talk about some of that stuff, and it was, you know.
There, it's, there's, yeah, it's a good, good conversation, good relationship. And Mayor Cowles is a great advocate for the relationship as well. So I think that helps a ton, and makes it easier for transition.
Absolutely, yeah. Which I appreciate.
Yeah, totally.
So. That was it for you?
Yeah.
All right. Um, I just had a couple of things. Um, I did, uh, attend the Savage Chamber event, the Wake Up Savage event. Um, and for those who heard me on the conference call the night before, I did not sound well. So there was a lot of surprise that I was there that morning. Um, but I thought the event just went really well. And I thought the, um, it was here at City Hall, um, but it was the, it was billed as the opportunity to meet the new mayor. And so, um, I thought we had a really good, a turn, a really good turnout. Um, and I'm just really looking forward to what we can do with, you know, the chamber and moving forward. And we had a lot of our economic development folks who were there that morning, um, touching base with people. And so I just thought it was a really great group, um, of people, um, connecting that morning. Um, I attended the Relief Association, that was the meeting that I did not sound good. Um, I attended virtually. Um, and, um, we'll see where we're going with that. So the relief, um, we got the report back, um, the funding report, and we'll get more updates on that next week. But, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll, I'll wait for the updates at, at the workshop next week as we talk about where things are at with that. Um, I had the opportunity to attend a Cub Scout PAC, uh, meeting and talk about being mayor. Um, Mitch also invited me to come to, uh, his son's kindergarten class, uh, and talk about being mayor. And I have to tell you, I thought, you know, who knows what a mayor is, right? So I said, do the kindergarteners, have any of you ever heard of a mayor? And they, I, I think it was 90% of them all said, yeah! And I was just shocked. And then they reminded me that Paw Patrol, the cartoon, they have a mayor. And actually, they have two. And, and I did tell the kids I thought I was more on the one mayor's side than the other, and I didn't really want to be associated with Mayor Humdinger. But anyway, it, it was just a really fun event. Um, we had, um, the police department was there, we had two officers there, we had Andy Weldon with the snowplow. Um, the kids were so excited, um, to see the plows and to see the, the police cars and to talk to police officers. Um, I just thought they were so engaged. I thought it was so much fun. Um, I did do a really fun exercise with them. Um, each one of the kids got $1. And our communications department was phenomenal because they look like real dollar bills. Um, I kept saying to them, they are not real. And they do say at the top of them, they're movie money. But they looked real. And every kid got $1. And there were four buckets. There was one for the police, one for fire, one for parks, and one for snowplows. And they had to decide whether they were going to put their $1. Um, and I said, because that's, I think, one of the hardest things about being mayor, is trying to figure out how we're going to fund all of this stuff with limited funds. Um, so it was just fascinating watching the kids come up and put their dollar bills in the bucket. You want to know who won?
Who won?
Who won? Uh, the police department did win overwhelmingly, I will say that. They did get $66 in their bucket. Um, yeah. There was There was, there was no fire department representative that morning, so, you know, they, they, they didn't get to, you know, pull their plug. And, um, I actually was impressed that some of the kids really said it was important to put money in the snowplow bucket. I, I was impressed, right? And some of them, I heard one of them go, what are you going to do? We got to give the money to the police. And one of the kids said, I like the parks. So, yeah, I just, it was, it was a really great exercise with them and what they wanted to do. Um, and the Cub Scout PAC, they were just fabulous, and, um, they got a treat for every question they asked me. So there were a lot of questions because they just really wanted the snacks, I think. But it was, it was very, very fun. Um, so, uh, and, oh, I also went to the League of Minnesota Cities and I think, uh, a training that the, I want, not the newly elected, the Advanced Foundation, um, seminar. And we'll do some follow-up with some of the stuff that, that I got to hear, uh, for that. Um, any other written communication, general information, a follow-up from staff or anybody else? All right, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.